Yeah, we got five o'clock. We can go. So I'd like to call this February twenty second, twenty twenty-two, meeting of city council. The order, as was noted earlier today, is two twenty-two, two zero twenty-two, something like that. It's a very unique date. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gregg. Councilmember Shealy.
Here.
Councilmember Sacran.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brady.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory. Councilmember Waring. Councilmember Seekings. Councilmember Shade. Councilmember Bowden. Councilmember Appel. Councilmember Parker. Mayor Tecklenburg.
Here.
Now, if you would like to join us, Councilmember Waring is going to lead us with an invocation and a pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you thanking you for a beautiful day. We ask the prayers for our country and our world. Stand again on the precipice of the war. We pray for the wisdom of Solomon to come forward. And common ground be reached with our bloodshed. We pray for our state and our city. As stewards of our city, we ask that we bring forth the best of our intellect as we go forth. Bringing services to those who are your citizens. And when it comes to those who are less than. Help us bring the very best that we can do for them. We pray for those who fight for democracy, both near and far. Watch over them, protect their family, keep them out of harm's way. We pray for our staff. They do so many things. And time to time, we get to say thank you. But please let our citizen know they do so much, frankly, with so little. These prayers we bring forth in your name, let us all say amen.
Amen.
I pray to the leaders to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one presentation officially on the agenda. I'd like to recognize and call forward Officer Kyle Skiles and his team, his colleagues from the police department. If they would like to join us up here on the stand. And I have a proclamation recognizing Officer Skiles. Whereas the city of Charleston wishes to recognize one of its most dedicated employees, Officer Kyle Skiles. And whereas before beginning his work in law enforcement, y'all listen to this, Officer Skiles, a Pennsylvania native, was a catcher for the Coastal Carolina University's twenty sixteen national championship baseball team. Wait, there's more. He was selected by the Saint Louis Cardinals in the twenty nineteen Major League Baseball draft. Recorded a two fifty batting average with two home runs and nine RBIs over twenty-seven games with the Johnson City Cardinals Minor League Baseball team. And after the minor leagues, Officer Skiles returned to South Carolina to fulfill a long time dream by beginning a career in law enforcement. So we're thankful for that. He joined the Charleston Police Department in June of twenty twenty. Officer Skiles, along with other Charleston and North Charleston police officers, responded to a call at the North Bridge for a citizen in distress on the night of January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. He was the first officer to arrive on the scene. He sprang into action using his crisis intervention training, which taught him how to respond safely and quickly to people with serious mental illnesses and crises, emphasizing de-escalation techniques and active listening skills. He was able to pull the citizen to safety and save his life. And whereas the city of Charleston is deeply appreciative of the heroic efforts of Officer Skiles and of all the remarkable men and women in Charleston Police Department who protect and serve our citizens at a moment's notice each and every day. Now therefore, I, John J. Tecklenburg, Mayor of the city of Charleston, do hereby proclaim today, Tuesday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, with such an unusual numeric date, is Officer Kyle Skiles' day in the city of Charleston. Congratulations.
Just wanted to say thank you, guys. It's awesome to get this recognition, but at the end of the day, we sign up for this job. That's what we do. Again, it's awesome to be recognized, but I'm here just doing a job, just like everybody else around, and thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor. The mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just want to recognize Councilmember Appel. When we've heard about his heroics, he was really pushing that the recognition be afforded to him, which he truly deserves. This happened in my district. I didn't know about it till word broke out, so I just want to thank you. And we all have another connection with Councilmember Bowden because it was one of his clients who he saved. So, thank you. And this just reinforces what Chief Linnell says all the time. Training, 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 and obviously that worked. So just thank you for your heroics and your quick thinking and applying the training that you were given. So congratulations. Well done.
All right. Thank you again. All right. Oh, I forgot to mention, if we, in the very unlikely event that we would need to evacuate the building, you got just a few options. These two doors out of this room and the one door out of the room to my right, the two stairways going down, and then just the one stairway going out the front. Please don't use the elevator in the event we had to evacuate for any reason. And I wanted to share with council, I hope this is the last meeting. We have to use these microphones. We have our new microphones hopefully going to arrive any day. So I will ask your forbearance again tonight. Remember to cut your microphone on. And you have to, like, distance yourself just about right. You got to get close enough to where we hear you. If you get too close, it backfires, so you got to gauge that for each microphone. I did want to note, and we'll have a formal city resolution representing myself and council this Thursday at the funeral of Liz Alston, who very sadly passed away this past weekend. She was a terrific citizen of our city. She had served as chairperson of the Charleston County School Board. She spent countless volunteer hours on both our history commission and our tourism commission. And she was feisty as she could be when she wanted to be, right, Councilmember Mitchell? But anyway, I wanted to note her passing. What a wonderful citizen Liz Alston was. And we'll recognize her further at her funeral on Thursday. And I did want to bring to council's attention this little model vessel here that I received the other day, the city received, from the Admiral of, from the Bahrainian Navy. They are here for a year. It amazes me that they would stay the whole time. But they bought a retired vessel from the United States Navy, and it's being completely overhauled at Denton Shipyards up in North Charleston. So the Admiral and Captain and about two hundred crew members from the country of Bahrain are going to be living in Charleston for the next year with their families while the vessel is being renovated. I'm not sure why they have to do it that way, but more power to them. And they're renting some facilities on the North Charleston Naval Base. But anyway, he was kind enough to give the city this gift, and I thought I would share that with you. So next, we have our public hearings. We've got nine of those this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to Christopher Morgan to introduce our public hearing matters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll get the slides up here in just a second. Okay, here we go. E-one, which is a rezoning. These are addresses on Maybank Highway, thirty-three fifty-one, thirty-three fifty-seven, thirty-three sixty-three. Maybank Highway on Johns Island. This is the former headquarters or Johns Island headquarters of the Berkeley Electric Cooperative. We'll show you the image here of the property. It's four different parcels. They were zoned GO because the type of facilities that the Berkeley Electric had from a utility standpoint worked under that GO zoning. But now the property is up for sale, and they are working with a buyer who is interested in having different uses on the site, but utilizing some of the same buildings that are there and facilities. And so we have come up with the business park designation as an appropriate one, given where this property is on Johns Island and in the context of Maybank Highway. Just a few other images to give you a sense of what's over here. Of course, there are residences to the rear of the property. It is in our new comprehensive plan as our neighborhood edge, which would be appropriate for that kind of business park use. This image shows the squared-off location of the general area around the property. It's not in one of our three centers on Maybank Highway, but it still is an area where economic development would be welcomed, of course, and this would be a good new use for the property that is up for sale. We have some aerial images of it as well, showing that a good bit of the property is currently, you know, storage yard for vehicles and supplies, things like that, the way the Berkeley Electric Co-op had it. And here's another image looking from the north. And then the image of Maybank Highway in front of the property. And looking the other way on Maybank Highway, it is the two-lane section of Maybank Highway, of course. And the applicant also provided an exhibit of how they'd like to divide up the property. They are looking at using some of the existing office structures at the front for a daycare or preschool-type facility, which we all know is well greatly needed on Johns Island. And then the rear for storage of facilities, things like that. Storage of items which could include boats and other items that folks on Johns Island have to store. And all this fits within the business park zoning. They've also had a good bit of networking with groups on Johns Island to come to an agreement with mutual recommendation for this type of zoning. And our planning commission has reviewed it and recommended for approval.
All right. Would anybody like to be heard on this matter? Please come forward. If you would state your name and address, and we'll allow a minute per comment. Yes, sir.
According to the complaint filed administrative officers of the United States Courts, Criminal Division of the IRS, Anthony G. Bryant, under twenty-eight USC three-three-one, upon public comment to South Carolina Senate on congressional district maps, and as a result of Village Euclid versus Ambler Realty Company decided in nineteen twenty-eight, changing of maps. You will be dealing with redistricting of overall land use based upon procedure for administrative of Section Five of the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, changing of the maps. So this is about the aggregate aspect of it. Berkeley Co-op should be dealing with using their property for affordable housing. All these public entities and organizations should be using their property to mitigate the serious crisis of housing. The applicant has his right to, under the Constitution, to, for his property rights. And therefore, I don't want to invade their property rights. I'll finish my statement in the next one.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to be heard? Hearing none, it comes to council.
Mr. Mayor, we did, Kyle Taylor did sign up online just to be available in case council had any questions. I don't know if he's on or not, but he did sign up.
He's representing the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions who can I entertain a motion to?
Move for approval.
All right.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Councilmember Brady.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was hoping you might be able to, you know, from folks on Johns Island, there had been some interest in the city potentially using that property. And I was just hoping you could, for the record, just clarify why the city wasn't interested in that particular property. And, you know, I'm in favor of the rezoning, obviously. But the questions we got were why the city wasn't interested.
Well, we did investigate the use of the property. And I think it was almost two years ago that I took our department heads out to the property. We inspected the buildings. We considered what city uses could be operated out of the facility. You know, I think it was just mostly a logistical consideration that we felt that future facilities would be best located West Ashley and near our Milford Street operations, where we have some property, but also West Ashley. So honestly, the feedback I got from our city leadership was they didn't feel like it would work for us. Yes, sir.
And I was also just going to point out, you know, folks had asked for it to be considered as a rec center or hurricane shelter, some things of that nature. But, you know, the city does have plans for parks expansion and other things on Johns Island. So just because we're rezoning this property does not mean that those plans aren't in effect for other areas of the city on Johns Island.
Well, that's a good point, and that came up in the discussion because at the time, we were pursuing an addition of property to our Johns Island Park. And we subsequently proceeded with that with a green belt application. We added, what, about ten acres? And we felt that the future rec center, more appropriately, would be right next to our park. And that was a consideration at the time. All right, any other question? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. Number two.
Number two is E-two, and it is a rezoning at the intersection of UG Street and Meeting Street. And it is owned by the Charleston Housing Authority. You all may have heard a little bit about this one already. But this is where they are planning to work with a private developer for more affordable units on the site. There are some townhouses on the site that are going to be demolished and many more units built in their place. The site is, of course, at Meeting and UG. It is surrounded basically on all sides by the MU zoning, the mixed-use workforce housing zoning. So the request that the housing authority has to go to the MU one workforce housing zoning is very much in line with the surrounding area. It is also in line with what's in our comprehensive plan, which shows this as part of our urban core. And that's typically the areas that we do recommend for that MU housing or MU zoning. The property has the townhouses that I mentioned, as well as the historic grant homes, which will continue to be housing and continue to be well-kept up and cared for. They front on Meeting Street. But they are going to use some of the parking area of those grant homes. So that's why all three parcels here are part of the rezoning class. We have another aerial or two. Here we go. That is looking at it from the UG Street side, and you see the grant homes along Meeting Street. And it's the townhouses that are at the back with the brown roofs that would be demolished and the new building would go in their place. We do have some images of the street here, and you all are probably very familiar with this site here. Got new housing, market rate housing across the street, the Meeting Street lofts, and then the Element apartments to the rear. And then the applicant has also provided some exhibits from their recent DAR submittals just of what they are going to be putting there. The building would be, in this location, broken up into four segments, but with a unifying kind of covered area that has a green space in it. And the parking would be behind the grant homes, as I said earlier. And this is a conceptual image of what the building would look like on the site. And just a view from UG Street, and I believe one more view from UG Street. But that is what the applicant has given us, and planning commission agreed with this request and recommended for its approval.
All right. Would anyone like to be heard on this matter? Yes, sir.
This is the reason why I'm here. Anthony G. Bryant. Sandy Sin, under S-one-fifty, basically stated that you get, you know, you were in executive session with her money. And S-one-fifty, she stated that she referred someone's speech to South Carolina Law Enforcement Division for their speech. And that person would then be qualified under H-three-six-two, which would then be the hate crime bill. Now, I made public comment on the housing authority, right? I'm being a rec, I am a separation of church and state. Okay, I'm a proponent of the separation of church and state, and I don't support that at all. And so my comments that I made have been referred to people based upon that premise in the housing authority.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to be heard? Hearing none, it comes to council for second reading. Any discussion? Councilmember Mitchell.
There's discussions, Mayor, and council.
We need a motion.
I'm moving a motion. I was going to move the motion, Nancy. That's right. That's fine. But that particular place is in the district I represent, which is two seventy-five UG Street, which I lived in there in nineteen eighty-three when it was built. And they asked me to move in there during the time. Hard to ask me to move in there to try to keep it straight during the time when I was working. And when I spoke with the housing authority, when they started this plan, when the RAD program came out, and they said it's going to just have to tear those buildings down because they want to expand that whole area where the parking is and behind it, the building and toward the, tear the building that's on Meeting Street per se. I told them I wanted to make sure that they replace those units back. They're going to tear down at two seventy-five UG Street. I think it's only twelve units. And they said, okay, we are replacing those back. It's hard to tell them they have to replace those units back. And the rest of the units they're going to build is going to be a mixture, if you may. And so when they showed me all the plans, I was satisfied with the plans that they're going to do with the area that they're going to do. And I want to make sure that they have more affordable housing placed in that particular area. And they promised me that it was going to do. So I made sure I looked at all the plans before this even came out from this housing authority, and that was under Don Cameron before. But the new director is following through with the same plan that they had previous. So this is going to put on more housing and more affordable housing in that particular area on Meeting Street and UG Street, if you may. So I think a total unit is going to be, what, sixty-something units?
Seventy-two, I believe.
Totally, once they build out the whole area. So it's going to be a lot of affordable housing in that particular area, which we have lost in that area for previous years. So it's going to be, you know, advantageous for people living in that particular area. Because everything else is going to be hotel around it, so we try to, still try to close some housing in that particular area.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilmember Seeking?
Mr. Mayor, I wholeheartedly am going to support this rezoning, but I would just like to comment. This is probably for Mr. Summerfield and Mr. Somerville together. I actually yesterday had lunch up in that corridor at Berkeley's, which is at the corner of UG Street and Rutledge. And when I was done, I walked back to East Bay Street. And the amount of activity in that corridor is mind-numbing. I mean, it's incredible between apartments and commercial activity, portable housing, hotels coming on the corners. It's almost impossible to traverse it.
Impossible to what?
To traverse across it in any way other than a car, and even that's really difficult. So I know that we had some conversations about this some years ago, about that corridor, what we could do about it in terms of reconfiguring it, making it safer for cars, bikes, pedestrians, all of that. But we got to do something with that corridor because if not, I mean, it's going to become impassable. It's also the main thoroughfare in and out of the city. So if you go there on any afternoon at four o'clock, it is, it's a nightmare. So I just think as we develop and think about this, we got to think about the infrastructure around it. We've got to get with the county, the DOT, whatever it takes to come up with some plans to make it more passable, more accessible, and safer. Because it's none of the above currently.
To that point, apparently, there's been a project on the books since before I became mayor to improve the streetscape, at least from Meeting back to East Bay Street. Believe it or not, it's finally moving along. It's one of those projects that has some federal funding. And so the checkoff list is like crazy, but it's finally moving along. We can give you a further report if you like at a future meeting. Thank you. Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Councilman Seeking, we are working on the streetscape in that particular area. I have, I had them to meet with the Rite of Refuge churches right there and meet with everyone in that particular area. And we were working with them because they're going to need Rite of Refuge to give up a little space in the front of their building to do the streetscape, to be able to have their bicycle and everything else. But the traffic is pretty bad around there, I'm going to tell you, because they use that when they go into Mount Pleasant. They use that area when they're coming down UG Street from King. And I see it every day because I live right on the, right by it. So it's backed up every day, and they're turning, you go to Mount Pleasant, and they're coming down UG Street. So the traffic is pretty bad. So I was telling them, I said, with the streetscape, how is this going to really help at all? I don't know. Really don't know how it's going to help, but it's going to really give people a chance to be able to use the bicycle, which they wanted to do, the bicycle and walking. And with the traffic, it's not, I don't know how they're going to do the traffic part. Really don't.
Should make it safer, and eventually, I feel like the complete, even though it's going in the other direction, the low line should help. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Now for third reading and ratification. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. Number three.
Yes, sir. So this is an ordinance amendment. It would add two new sections to our zoning ordinance to provide for shared parking. And this is actually bringing us in line with our fellow municipalities of Mount Pleasant and North Charleston. Also, Columbia has a section like this in other cities all over the country. And essentially, this follows the Urban Land Institute's recommendations for the ways you can share a parking lot. So if you've got, say, a restaurant that's open in the evenings that needs its spaces in the evenings, but during the day, you've got an office user that needs daytime spaces, there are ratios and ways those spaces can be shared, and it makes the most efficient use of a parking lot. And we think it's a really good addition to our zoning ordinance and will help us facilitate good development and redevelopment around the city.
Thank you. Would anybody like to be heard on this matter? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Anthony G. Bryant, I'll be specific on this one. This is why public transportation is essential. It's an essential service because then we'll be able to take cars off of these streets. And it's not a service that's not essential for a place that has become expensive. So all these restaurants that are procuring all this revenue and money need to try to set aside some money for their employees and others to get to and from work throughout the whole region. And I think that, I think that we need to really seriously consider making public transportation an essential service because people, the disparity in income is so great. If we had a disparity in income, then it wouldn't be essential and wouldn't be money-making. But you're making money, but ain't nobody getting none.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to be heard? Hearing none, it comes to council. Councilmember Sacran, can I entertain a motion?
Remove.
I was going to get new mics soon. Mr. Morgan, so just to clarify for myself, so if you're a restaurant owner, you've got a restaurant, and then there, you know, you've got a shared parking lot, and then there's a daytime, there's a business that's an office space. Does this ordinance change, make it more, give the either entity? this ordinance change, make it more, give, give the, either entities more flexibility around the minimum parking requirements? Is that, is that what it does?
For, for redevelopments or new developments, it lets you have much more flexibility if you've got the, the different use, different types of uses on a site that could share the spaces based on their hours of operation and peak load demands, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Appel?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is another very welcome improvement to our zoning ordinance around the issue of parking. You know, last year, we eliminated minimum parking requirements on a portion of King Street. So between eliminating, sharing, I think we're moving in the right direction, and I'd like to maybe see if we can get an update perhaps at some point this year on just sort of how things have been going from Calhoun to Broad on King Street with the minimum parking requirement ordinance, because I've had some folks reach out about, you know, potential expansion of that, and I think that, you know, learning lessons as we, as we go, I think is an important part of that process. So just wanted to keep that in mind as we continue to improve our, our city and not tie development to parking.
Councilmember Seaking?
So we can certainly get a specific report, but I can tell you, it's worked. Because as soon as we did it, one of the first buildings to go was the old King Street Grill, which had a huge off-site parking requirement. So it's ready, it's time for us to have that conversation of expansion. I think our team over in the Planning Department's ready to have that conversation. And I will just tell you, from south of Calhoun, the anecdotal evidence is they're leasing up down there. So it's working. Yep.
Great. Councilmember Shade?
I, I thought we were doing this already, quite frankly, and I'm just a little, I saw this on our agenda, just a little puzzled, I guess, as to why we need an ordinance to allow this to happen. We just, we've been doing this in practice. I know other establishments have done it. Is it turnover on parking spots for different establishments? So this is just gonna legalize what we've been practicing in the past? Is that essentially what we're doing here?
In the downtown, very often, this does happen in practice. In planned unit developments, this essentially has been happening, but this now brings it to our GB zoning districts around the city.
All right. Let me just take it one, one more step. So as we're developing the Sumo Street site, and we're moving with a public hearing coming up pretty soon on this, as a matter of fact, some of the areas or the buildings will be, I'm not residential, retail or restaurant or office. Hopefully, we'll have a, a civic center of some sort for the city to, to use. So this is going to impact that type of use as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. Good. Well done. Thank you.
It should help us at Sumo Street. Yes, sir. Councilmember Brown?
Mr. Morgan, you, you mentioned developments or redevelopments, or I guess new developments or redevelopments. So is there a process, if you're an existing business, you can apply for this, or would that just not be necessary, I guess?
It would really, you know, if you've already got your certificate of occupancy for your, your business, this wouldn't really apply. But let's say you were expanding, or, or they were, you know, a developer was adding more uses onto the site, that's where this would come into play.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now for third reading and ratification. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Number four.
This is another ordinance amendment. This would allow in our home occupations, certain allowed outdoor activities to be used as home occupations. Previously, we had not allowed outdoor activities, in particular, things like swimming lessons in a backyard swimming pool. And so it's something that we've heard from communities that they, they are in favor of, and I think we had a tremendous amount of support for some particular folks who, who give backyard lessons. And so the Planning Commission has reviewed it and felt comfortable with it, and has recommended it to you all.
Would anyone like to be heard on this matter? All right. Hearing none, it comes to council. Motion to approve. Councilmember Shealy?
Just had a question. I believe when we talked about this last time, Morgan, there is a limit to the number of kids and that type of thing with the swimming. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me dig into the ordinance here. Two. Two, yes. People reading faster than I am.
All right, thank you.
The limit was two? Yeah, all right.
And Mr. Mayor, we did receive comments, 58 comments in support of the ordinance.
How many?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight comments.
That swimming crowd is organized, okay? They are synchronized swimming.
And I would note, Mr. Mayor, a good number of those came out of my district, so, as well, so I read those comments. Thank you for passing them on to us.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. Now for third reading and ratification. Motion? Any comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Number five.
Mr. Mayor? A move, we take five, nine together for purposes of public hearing. They're all zonings of recently annexed either single-family resident or rural residential properties, so if we could just call them out.
Second.
Have a public hearing from there.
All in favor of taking them together, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. If you would present them all, and then I will give the public an opportunity to come forward on any, any item.
Yes, sir. So we've got a 2221 South Dallerton Circle, which is in West Ashley. This is in an area that is in our low-impact and conserved area in our new plan based on elevation, but it is a lot that needs the R4, or, I'm sorry, SR1 standards, and so we are recommending for SR1 in this location. And there's an image of the property, and Planning Commission recommended for that. E6 is again on South Dallerton, and it is another one that we are recommending for SR1. Again, it's in low-impact and conserve based on its elevation, and here's an image of it, very similar. And we recommend, Planning Commission recommended for that, seven to zero. And then we've got this property also in West Ashley that is on, it should be, publishing street names, that last one, I'm sorry, was 2216 South Dallerton Circle. And then this one is 1506 North Edgewater Drive. This one is a little bit of a larger lot. It also is in a lower elevation location, and so we are recommending for an RR1 on this one, because they have the space to accommodate that. A good bit of this lot is actually marsh, but that would prevent, you know, further subdivision in the future that would be out of character with the elevation of the property. And here you see an image of the property, a fairly sizable lot there, and that was recommended by Planning Commission in favor as well. And then we have a number of lots that are on Wedge Park. These names, they are... 30, 32, and 34 Wedge Park, and 43 and 49 Little Landra. Here, the properties that are on Wedge Park, we're recommending for SR2, and then there are two properties in Little Landra in blue that we're recommending for SR1, and these are in our new plan as neighborhood, although one of them is on the edge with a little bit lower elevation, but because of its lot size, again, we're recommending for the, the SR1 on that one. And Planning Commission also reviewed these and recommended approval for these as well.
Thank you. You got one more.
Oh, yes. Sorry. And then this is 2319 Lazy River Drive in West Ashley, and this is parcel that is much larger as well. It is in a low elevation. Because it's a larger lot, we were able to recommend for RR1 on that, because they have the lot area for that. And there you see an image of the property, and Planning Commission did endorse that one as well.
All right. Would anyone like to be heard on the zoning of the following properties? Please come forward. 2120, 2221, and 2216 South Dallerton Circle, 1506 North Edgewater Drive, 3032 and 34 Wedge Park Road, 43 and 49 Little Landra Avenue, and 2319 Lazy River Drive. Any of those properties? Yes, yes, sir.
I just filed a complaint to the Justice Department in terms of administrative procedure, Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act regarding annexations. Was submitted to the US District Court, because in the, we've lost in Clyburn's District, 85,000 people, 39,000 approved in the city of Charleston, and Berkeley County's redistricting right now, under Ambler, Euclid versus Ambler, 1928 decided, basically didn't even consider these issues in terms of race or anything, which is no financial hardship in terms of an applicant being harmed in any kind of way, in terms of any development, in terms of House, House Bill 408, the appropriations being made, American Rescue Act money for water and sewer, and flooding, and all these issues of mitigation, going through the process, not considering race at all as a factor. So land use policies is, is completely a delusion.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to be heard on any of those properties? Hearing none, they come to council altogether.
Come in.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. We appreciate it.
Move for approval of the minutes.
Next up is our minutes, January 25th, and our special meeting from February 8th. Any additions, deletions, comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is our citizens' participation period. We have, Madam Clerk?
Five people.
Five people signed up. Let's allow a couple minutes each.
Anthony Bryant?
I've never read, um, read a statement in my life before, but when people use force or people's speech, and Senate Bill 150, the Senator stated that if anyone's speech is, they can refer their name to South Carolina Law Enforcement Division, all these documents will support that, and I will continue to speak, because my speech began in the 13th, 14th, and 15th minimal. And nobody's gonna take my free speech from me, no matter who it is. This is my statement. I wanna be able to read the whole statements under a minute. According to the complaint, administrative officer of the United States Court and Criminal Division of IRS, Anthony G. Bryant, 28 USC 331, upon public comments South Carolina Senate on congressional redistricting as a result of village of Euclid versus Amber Realty Company, decided 1928 by the Supreme Court of the United States. Zoning complaint will be filed in the city of Charleston, based upon House Bill 448 relating to American Rescue Act appropriations, relating to water and sewer, mitigation of stormwater and flooding. Upon debate on Senate Bill 150, where the Senator that procured settlement on behalf of the city of Charleston referred a person's speech to South Carolina Law Enforcement Division, since 1989, 3,000 persons have been wrongfully accused or tried to not commit. 100,000 insane in federal prison right now, wrongfully accuse many African-Americans that are poor, and many from my city. Department of Agriculture monies have been used in Title I schools for years to put African-American males by and large in prison by default. It, it, it's, it's a genocide, in my opinion. They state there's been a genocide on black folks since 1895, in my opinion. And my speech is my speech, and it's not hate speech.
Mohammed Idris.
Thank you, sir. No, sir, we don't transfer.
Evening. When you read the Bible, all of you, I think, too, you find that Pharaoh killed off all the male child, children, and saved the female. And that's the same thing Mr. Bryant is saying. He's saying that this city here is one of the worst city on the planet Earth, Charleston, South Carolina, or one of the worst city. But what I'm here tonight to say is that I thank our former President Donald Trump for what he did January the 6th. He got more homeland, homeland terrorists locked up than all the former administration in this country, when he tricked them and said he was gonna take over the Congress, et cetera. And all those lawyers, judge, and shelf got locked up that day, and Trump went back to the White House. Looked like we never could have found those people who were blowing up places and everything, killing innocent people. They would always be high, and it was something that it wasn't no local people, no low people, it was judges, lawyers, police officers, and all them killing people off in the name of right, when they were doing wrong. And we would come to these people looking for justice, and they're the one who was blowing up different places. So I take this time and Black History Month, African-American History Month, saying that racism is dead. We are suffering from jealousy, envy, greed, and pure ignorance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Trenton Walker?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's good to be back in person. I'm here today on an agenda item that deals with your executive session, and that's the Johns Island Mid. I'm a lawyer at 66 Hazel Street. We've sent in a letter on our three clients, Beach Fenwick, and also Crown at Maybank, and Crown at Live Oak. And I'm not gonna go over those letters, I'm not gonna punish you with that. What I am gonna do is I'm gonna give sort of a high level on this. It's a laudable goal. Everybody agrees that Johns Island needs infrastructure. It is blowing up, and it doesn't have the infrastructure to handle it. But what council is doing with this mid is not the way to do it. A fundamental, essential requirement of a mid is that the people who pay for it get a special benefit. And here, there are no projects identified. There's no way that we can say a road or a park is just gonna benefit the people that are paying the bills. And if it doesn't confer a special benefit on the people that are paying it, then it's an unlawful tax, and I'm not making this up, it's not argument. Our state Supreme Court emphatically upheld this rule this summer, and I would submit it would be wiser for council to stop, take a look at this, and decide whether this is really the way you wanna do it. Because if you want these improvements, I'd submit there are other ways to do it, and it would not be good to spend three years in litigation. I mean, we did that with the tax cap first time around with the county, and we know where that ended up, and we're gonna be in the same place. It may be politically expedient to say the existing taxpayers and owners don't have, excuse me, voters don't have to pay, but it's politically, I mean legally doomed. And if there is a true desire to fix this, then I think, and would submit on behalf of my-
Nathan Gates? Nathan Gates?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Nathan Gates. I reside at Set 59, Roll the Jab Apartment D, also a proud member of the Charleston Fire Department. Here to speak tonight, we just wanna raise awareness about our starting pay, 1280 an hour. We're having one more gentleman leave at the end of the month, which brings our total vacancies up to 46. They do have another hiring class, but that'll take approximately 28 weeks, so we're looking that far out, and then we'll still have an additional 16 vacancies that probably won't get filled until November. This is also in part, that we're also afforded 3.2% less than our non-sworn peers, the city are received in a raise. We would just think that having such a low starting wage affects our ability to attract qualified candidates and keeping them here. So we're eager to see the results of the base salary you ordered, Mr. Mayor, and we hope when you take in those, that, that data point, you also include cost of goods and cost of living, so hopefully we can bring everybody up and do a livable wage and retain the members that we, we paid to train. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Marcus McDonald. And if you're online, if you could press star six.
Hello. My name's Marcus McDonald. I'm the lead organizer of Charleston Black Lives Matter. I'd like to publicly apologize to Councilmember Appel for my insensitive social media posts last week. I'm committed to continuing working with the Jewish Federation, snap out the Hate Act, and the Commission on Human Affairs and Racial Acciliation to come together to create a better choice for everyone. To City Council, I must express my deep disappointment regarding the commission- To City Council, I must express my deep disappointment regarding the commission. It shows that there's a lot of work to do when the City Council effectively erase the recommendations made by over forty community members, many of them who are professionals and high-level experts in their craft, and backed by hundreds of community groups and organizations. All that erased in favor of voices like Brett Barry and the American Heritage Act, who have no credentials in regards to their racial equity, but were given priority in regards to the negotiations and amendments that were passed. After totally ignoring our voice for several months and even up to a year and a half, City Council further threatened to silence my voice during Black History Month of that. I urge you to strongly rethink that political strategy, and let's move forward in reconciliation and not retaliation. Happy Black History Month.
Thank you, sir.
And then we did receive some comments online. One person said that Mr. McLean stated during the traffic and transportation meeting that barricades were temporary, and that he asked if forty-five years were also temporary. And ten people opposed the city's vaccine mandate for employees, and those are all the comments we received.
Thank you. Did we miss anyone? That's the end of our public participation. Thanks for being a part of it. Next is our petitions and communications. Tracy McKee is here. Give us a brief update on the city's response to COVID-nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Glad to see not everyone's leaving tonight. I really cleared the room a couple of weeks ago. So the good news continues. The rolling seven-day average of new cases from testing continues to go down eighty-six percent in Charleston County and seventy-seven percent in Berkeley County over the past two weeks. Percent positive from testing is still a little high, six-and-a-half percent and twelve percent respectively. Finally starting to see hospitalizations go down, so that's gone down twenty-seven percent over the past week in the state of South Carolina. Y'all probably saw on February eighteenth, DEHEC announced a shift in their testing strategy, which is kind of favoring the at-home rapid antigen testing. And phasing of their testing strategy begins on March first, and because the at-home testing isn't reportable, DEHEC will start to no longer report daily case counts beginning on March fifteenth. So, and as of this morning, there were four positive cases among employees and another seven waiting for test results, so good news on that front. We seem to be holding steady with employee cases, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions anyone might have.
Councilmember Parker.
This is McKee. So you did state that February eighteenth, DEHEC shifted to at-home testing.
Yes.
Okay. So are all of these medical recommendations based upon the CDC DEHEC, or are there outside factors or data considered, like MUSC?
From DEHECs?
Mm-hmm. Are there other, are you considering other factors, like from MUSC?
I'm just reporting on what DEHEC is, what DEHEC is doing. Yes, yes, yes.
Um, so per, I think you just explained this as well, but per the New York Times and other media outlets, just this week, the CDC hasn't released much of the data on vaccine efficacy. So how can City Council trust these medical recommendations if we don't have the data?
I'm not sure what you're asking me to-
Repeat the question, please.
How, if we, if they're gonna, going to lower the data, how are we supposed, how does City Council and the mayor, you know, with the employee mandates and things like that, how are we going to utilize that data in pushing these mandates with our employees?
I'm not, I'm still unclear what you're asking me. I'm not sure what the question is.
Could I just clarify that we do have a policy in place, but I wouldn't describe it at all as pushing a policy on our employee. Basically, everybody's in compliance now. They either got vaccinated or they have a exemption.
An accommodation, yes.
Okay. What is the medical rationale for not recommending vaccinated employees wear a mask or get weekly testing while forcing the unvaccinated people to wear a mask and get weekly testing?
Our HR folks worked closely with our medical partners to determine, you know, kind of the, what the policy would be, and really, HR would be able to probably talk a little more broadly about that.
Okay, and who are the medical partners? I think that goes back to kind of my first-
Yeah, so our friends at MUSC and DEHEC.
Is wearing a mask considered an emergency measure, or is it your medical recommendation that mask mandates are a routine measure to prevent transmission?
I'm not a medical professional.
Do you see masks and this mandate with our city employees being a long-term solution?
Again, I'm not a medical professional. We rely on our medical partners to provide us guidance on our policies.
Okay.
If I may interject here as well, the current city policy does not require you to wear a mask in a city building any longer. I also consult with medical professionals, I read what's, what's being put out by the CDC, and still, you know, they, they recommend responsible use of masks, if you're around other folks. But anyway, given the numbers, what they are, we have dialed back our requirements, in fact, they're no longer required in city buildings. They are recommended if you don't, if you're unvaccinated. And the, and the simple belief there is that those who are unvaccinated are, are either more likely to contract COVID or more likely to have serious symptoms from, from the disease.
Okay, but the CDC also said that, you know, vaccinated individuals, it doesn't prevent transmission. So again, we're still forcing unvaccinated employees to wear masks, but the CDC has come out and said that even vaccinated individuals can still trans, you know, it's still transmissible, so.
Correct, and if you follow their science, their data, those who are unvaccinated are more likely to have serious symptoms from the disease and a higher incidence of death as well. So that's why we, from the beginning, thought on recommendation of healthcare professionals that being vaccinated was a good thing.
Okay. Do you think that this mandate for our city employees is going to stick around, or are you going to?
We'll take it as it comes. We'll see what data comes-
I mean, can I add, council, do you feel that this is, should continue, our city employees? I mean, I've heard from numerous city employees that this is, you know, this is troublesome, the things, the stories. I spoke last, at the last meeting about, you know, the testing initiatives, things that they're being subjected to, you know, our testing, their testing timelines, you know, they get, if they're an hour late reporting, they get, you know, in trouble. I just ask council as a body, do you think that this, this mandate for our city employees should continue?
If I may add one more little piece of data to the puzzle, even with our own testing, every week, we continue to find folks that are testing positive. It has gone down, but even last week, we had positive tests, and we were able to prevent exposure to other employees and our citizens, depending on who the employee was, by finding out that they were COVID-positive. So we still think the testing protocol makes sense. We'll certainly consider it over time if, if we see over, that after a number of weeks and months, that there's, there's no positive cases showing up anymore, we'll certainly take that into account. Certainly open the floor if any councilmembers want to weigh in. Councilmember Sacran and Waring.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, we are now two years into this, roughly, and I will stand by what I said two years ago. I think the city has taken a measured, practical, practical approach. When you look at other jurisdictions across this country, and many cities across this country, we have taken the right approach in concert with Governor McMaster. Some will disagree with me. I think the state of South Carolina, as well as the city of Charleston, has done an awesome job. This council, your leadership, I understand it's not popular, Councilman Parker, I hear from people all the time that disagree with my position. My position as a councilmember is to represent all of my constituents, so I gotta weigh that. You're right, I personally don't think a vaccine mandate for employees is a good thing. That's my personal opinion. But again, as a councilmember, I have to weigh all those options and, and look to the mayor and other councilmembers for their opinion. So I will say, past two years, I think the city's done an awesome job. I know it's not been popular, politically popular, but our job is not to be, you know, politically popular all the time. Sometimes we gotta make decisions that folks don't, don't particularly care for. But again, when you measure our, our, our results and what we've done compared to other cities and other jurisdictions across the country, some have gone too far to the right, some have gone too far to the left. I think we've been measured, and I'll stand by that today, as I stood by that two years ago. Thank you.
Councilmember Waring.
Yes, it's been tough, Councilwoman Parker, and really the whole city. No exact science on it, no exact policies on it. And I support the mayor. If you're gonna make a mistake, I think you'd be conservative in making that mistake when it comes to people's health, in this case, the city's health, employees' health, et cetera. But I think we have to follow the science on it, but one thing you may mention of that I'm interested in, because I, that's the first time I heard that, are we have any people getting in trouble? Because, if you mind phrasing that again, about people getting tested, coming in late or something like that, I mean, I don't, hopefully we could work with our employees. What's, is that, what is that policy when somebody gets tested and if they come in late? If that's what you were saying, I'd just like some more clarity on that. That's the first time I heard that, so.
That's the first time, so please share.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I mean, multiple people have reached out, they, they're penalized, they're suspended, you know, maybe a shift, pay, it's sort of three strikes you're out, that's the policy, if I understand correctly. That's what's been reported to me.
I'm not aware of any of those scenarios. I feel, from my understanding, HR has been, you know, very agreeable in working with everybody. Testing's been kind of complicated, especially when Omicron was surging, so our HR department was, worked very well with those, had an accommodation to, to get tested.
Yeah, and the testing, so the testing, they have specific sites, so you mentioned, you know, DEHEC, DEHEC is shifting to these at-home tests, but our employees are not allowed to use those at-home tests. They have to use a DEHEC site, or it has to be a, a register, it can't be the at-home test. I don't know, it has to be a specific, they have two options, the DEHEC testing site or another lab where it costs them fifty dollars. They're also not allowed, they have to do it off-duty.
I do believe there are a number of those DEHEC sites that are available.
And again, as Omicron surged, they were very long wait times, so I'm sure that that's where some of the, you know, I mean, you can understand as a city employee, you're already, you know, understaffed, overworked, underpaid, and now you have to wait in line, you know, at a DEHEC testing center when Omicron, it was hours, you know.
Do our people have to pay for the tests out of their pocket?
What's that?
Do our people have to pay for the testing out of their pockets?
They do, they do. Yes, sir.
And it's weak.
It's not eligible under our health insurance policy if they don't take, they don't get a vaccine, I think it's the protocol from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So be happy to have HR come back to you, explain more fully where we are. We are evaluating it, as I mentioned just a few moments ago, because we are tracking the number of people who, they're required to get the tests, but we're, every week, we're finding people that are positive, and, and sometimes, and, and I think now, often, they're asymptomatic, so they take the test and they're not sick, so they don't know they're going back into the workforce and able to, to, to spread the virus. So again, with, with that information, I, I still think it's a reasonable thing for us to continue to do and monitor, but I'll be happy to have Kay come to us or either come to a meeting of our HR committee and more fully explain.
You actually pointed me to the HR committee, we hadn't had a meeting yet, so.
Yeah, I think there's one coming up.
So, so it'd be good to, I'll call and see whether we can have a meeting, I'm not chair, but I'll call. We have a meeting, and it'd be good to have this, to have Kay come and report the council up on that, bring us up to speed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gregory, it's the chair of the committee this year, so please request a meeting with him.
Okay.
Or I will, don't worry.
Um, and just one other thing, I believe that, did HR, and this might just be another, you know, question for HR, but, you know, this, this certainly seems, you know, our unvaccinated employees are being forced to wear masks, okay? We, we know that the science doesn't, you can still spread it if you're masked, you can spread it if you're unmasked, but they're being sort of singled out. I've heard a lot of stories where they've been, you know, quite frankly discriminated against because of their, their choice, the choice that they made, their medical choice. I believe in freedom, liberties, they were also, their names were emailed out to their supervisors. Everyone has, knows who they are, they're not vaccinated, and obviously, if they are, they have to wear a mask if they aren't. I just, I, I think it's, it's a far reach, I think, for our city employees. We talk about our city employees a lot, how much we appreciate the work that they do. I believe there, we are certainly understaffed, we have certainly lost a few people to these policies. I know I lost people to the rec that watched my boys grow up, and, you know, because they were denied an exemption. So this is real, it's happening, and I think, I, I think what we can see nationally is this is, you know, these mandates, you know, it's time to, you know, stop the government restrictions and just allow personal responsibility to take over, you know, that, that's just my, like you said, the science keeps, seems to be trending that way, but we're not changing anything. We've taken the mandate off the city buildings, things like that, but not for our city employees. So I just think we should-
Yeah, I mean, we keep talking to our partners, and based off of the data that we're seeing, like the mayor said, we're still getting positive results from those employees getting tested. So it's not like we're not, you know, kind of revisiting it, we're definitely talking to them all the time to, to make adjustments as we see they're needed.
Again, I just want to point out that it's just the unvaccinated employees that you're forcing this on, so.
There is a distinction between unvaccinated, and the, the science, in fact, does indicate there's a difference in risk of passing the virus, whether you're wearing a mask or not, so.
And whether you're vaccinated or not.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. All right, any other comments or questions? Councilmember Greg.
How many employees have been vaccinated? How many haven't? Is that a, we have those numbers maybe next week or two weeks?
I used, I can't remember.
It was over ninety percent.
It's over ninety percent.
Vaccinated. We now have about sixteen-hundred-and-fifty employees, so something less than, I think about a hundred-and-fifty maybe total.
Okay, thank you.
May I, this, I don't know the total number, but during the Omicron surge, the fire department had sixty-four members out sick at one time with the virus. Of these sixty-four members, only six were unvaccinated. Just one little stat there.
All right, thank you. So next on the agenda is our council communications, we have requests from councilmembers seeking regarding virtual participation in meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will be very brief. As you all are well aware, as we sit here tonight, this is our fourth meeting in two weeks, which I think is actually unprecedented. And you all are probably aware that we amended our rules of council at the beginning of this year. Over the course of time, we learned that we could participate virtually effectively, and so when we amended our rules, we allow now everyone to participate at committees virtually, and many of our committees meet only virtually, and we talked about that today, Mr. Mayor. Meeting in person is great. The one thing we did do, though, was limit our ability as councilmembers, absent health concerns, from participating at council virtually. And, and I can pick up the phone and call y'all about this, but in talking to a few of you and in thinking about this, and given sort of the technology and how effective it has been, and by the way, during the course of our emergency ordinance over the last two years, we did actually meet in person and allow people to participate virtually, and some did, from overseas, right? So I mean, it allowed us, I mean, good, good on y'all. And so what I'm sort of asking y'all without taking a vote on it, whether or not you would be willing to consider allowing, now that we've got the technology, us, our council, to at least one or two times a year, without penalty or having to show that we're sick, participate virtually. And look, we all want to be around this table, I do. In the twelve years I've been here, I've missed one meeting, one. So, you know, we want to be here, but there are- So, you know, we want to be here, but there are times, particularly in the last two weeks with those four meetings, two of which were unscheduled at the beginning of the year, we could not, under our new rules, participate virtually in those. So I would love to see us amend to allow one or two times a year without having to get a doctor's note for us to participate virtually if we give advance warning. And there's a quorum here, people in person. And so I guess my question to y'all is, not to be answered tonight, if you have heartburn with that, I would never ask our staff to participate, prepare something like that, but if y'all think that's something you'd be willing to consider, I think I would ask our legal staff to put something on paper, bring it to y'all for consideration and vote, but don't want to waste anybody's time. So that's my pitch for tonight, and would love to see a little brief amendment on that if we could do it.
Councilmember Brady?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Seekings, for bringing this up, because this was one of the things, we were going through the emergency ordinances that I had, was a big advocate for as well, because I also think that it opens up, you know, for folks, we've, we've talked about wanting to get more diverse views on council, and how do you get people? And, you know, one of those things is that, you know, a lot of people have to travel for work, and we all do our best to get here. I know in a couple of weeks, I have to be out of the area for work, but I'd love to be able to participate virtually because I can have that ability in the evening, but can't make it back to Charleston for a 4:30 start time. And and I had proposed, this is Councilmember Seekings had, that as long as there's a physical presence of a quorum of members present and voting, and you would need to provide prior notice to the mayor and the clerk's office, and any chair of any committee that you would be needing virtual for as well, if there was something in person, that, you know, I think that's a reasonable accommodation because it's not 1821, it's not just the peninsula, we're not, you know, farming the field during the day and coming back on our horses later on. This is, this is 2022, and so we should be able to utilize the technology effectively since we don't do proxy votes and nor do, I think we should. It's an appropriate way for councilmembers to be involved, even if they can't be physically present.
Councilmember Shade?
Yeah, I agree with the discussion we're having here tonight, and remember, Councilmember Lewis was very much opposed to this idea. This is before we had our Zoom capability, and I think that there are, there are going to be times and opportunities in which we could be called away, like Councilmember Brady is mentioning about, or Councilmember Seekings mentioned about. As long as we give advance notice of this, this may be a good opportunity, and we get a, maybe one or two per calendar year pass, I guess, from being here presently, physically. I will tell you that the meeting we had this afternoon with real estate was a breath of fresh air, because when we're on this virtual meetings, we're not able to really interact with one another, and I think we're missing something. So as soon as we get back to in-person committee meetings, the better. I know that's a inconvenience for a lot of folks. I have the luxury of being right here on Broad Street and walk across the street, and, you know, I understand that, but also, I think it just, it makes a big difference that we're interacting with one another and communicating with one another on a different level in person. So if we can get back to that level of committee meetings sooner, the better, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There's nothing preventing us from starting to have in-person committee meetings again. I think I'm going to ask the committee chairs to make that call if they want to try it and proceed as we did this afternoon. It's funny, you mentioned Councilmember Lewis, and, you know, pre-COVID, this whole discussion would have been blasphemous, right? It would not even have been tolerated, but the the world has changed a little bit, and and things are more easily virtual, and and so some consideration, I think, should be given, particularly for meetings, special meetings, workshop meetings that weren't on the calendar when we started the year. So if it, if it pleases council, we'll come back to something to you with a rule change for consideration. Councilmember Waring? Yeah? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, and I'm not anti-being together. I think it's great, but as Councilmember Brady pointed out, there's just times where you physically can't be here, and we shouldn't exclude people from having their voices heard. So, I mean, I I'm with you all. I think we should get back together as often as we can, and in the rare instance that we can't be here, we should be able to participate because technology has shown that it works even from three, four, five, six, seven time zones away, so.
All right. Thank you. Next up is a discussion of the redistricting. Councilmember Shade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so I joined the discussion we had with Tracy, Councilwoman Waring, Councilwoman Parker, and I were on on that Zoom call, and I was just a little concerned with the, I guess, lack of speed that we're moving with this. I know that the South Carolina General Assembly has passed their redistricting lines, and the congressional district lines have been gone through. County council has gone through and redrawn their lines. This is the end of February, they've had the same data that we've had. I was a little concerned with some of the proposed district lines that I saw, because we pitted, I think, one or two of those alternatives, other councilmembers, we run against one another. One of them had me going all the way over to K. O. Y. and Daniel Island, and the logic of that was just well beyond mine. I understand we made a lot of progress since that meeting that we've had. I wanted to make sure that we're still progressing on on that path. I'm not going to push right now on any idea of a of a special ad hoc committee, but I do want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction on this. Our citizens deserve to know who their representatives are. Councilman Brady has brought up several times to me that he represents two-thirds of the city of Spartanburg, if, if, and so the people of Johns Island, people on Daniel Island need to know who their representatives are. They have been underrepresented long enough, and with the population shift that we're having out of West Ashley is going to pick up a bunch of new residents in the immediate future. I met with Taylor Bush yesterday, and Long Savannah's on the, on the fast track, and to see how that's going to increase our population now in that area with Councilmember Shealy and Bowden, and that's, and Brady, all going to have another explosion coming really soon. So I just want to get this, purpose of putting this on the agenda tonight, which is to express my little frustration with where we were going with it. I understand we're making some progress, so let's see where we are in the next 30 to 60 days, and I may come back, and we knew this, or may just let it die on the vine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So if I just briefly add that our staff has been working on this, we very intentionally kind of waited until after the special election over in District One, because we didn't want to confuse voters about if they started seeing other maps being proposed of what your district looked like. Kind of wanted it just to stay in place until we got through that election, and I certainly appreciate the fact that the House and Senate and all has been already moving ahead of us, but they have elections this year and we don't until next year. So we had a little, little comfort room there, just by explanation. Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes, Mayor, I think, I understand what most people are talking about, but we we met a couple of councilmembers in the peninsula, and we met, and we are working tirelessly on this, and I think we are coming to some conclusion with redistricting. Normally, we were trying to keep as many minority districts as we possibly can. That was one of the biggest issue that we were talking about, and we voted here on council to do that, which is going to be very hard to do, very, very hard to do. But we have to do the best we can with it. And so this is why we met, the four of us met, who was on the peninsula itself. I was in Daniel's Island at one time, right from where I live on King Street, and had to go to Daniel's Island. I represent Daniel's Island, Kenwood, and the peninsula, you know, at the time, back in time, we wasn't that many houses. But now, we have grown so much over there. You know, the Justice Department moved me out of that, that area, but we don't have a Justice Department involved anymore, and that's when they moved me down to Mazek Ragsboro, you know? But, you know, we are working on it, and I think we are coming close to some kind of conclusion, I think. Right, Councilman Seekings? We're getting, we're getting close. I think we're getting close to something pretty soon.
We spent three and a half hours in the MEAC on Friday afternoon, if that tells you anything. We were still talking when it was all over, so.
So we are, we are, we are, we are making some headway, and we have not crossed any other districts, in anyone else's district. We have not. So we are not merging with someone else's district and looting in them and running against, no, we're not doing that. We're trying to stay away with, from those things. And Councilman Seekings itself has taken some big hit if we go the way that we are going, you know? I mean, some big challenges he is taking, so I applaud him on that. This is my third reapportionment. So I've been through it many times, and I've been through it even when my district was merged with another district, and that's when I bought out the council. District Three was merged with another district. So we already had, we already played with those two districts before, and I'm not going to let this happen again, because I'm not going to let that happen then, go through it again like that. I think, I don't think it's right, you know? So we sit around here, but you've got to remember that things happen, but those two districts have already been through that before, merging together, and another councilman had to pull out, right from District Three and District Four. So it could happen to someone else's too, you know, it happened before. So I'm just saying, we're going to do the best we can with it, and and people are fighting us in the community, but they're looking for minority, "Yeah, they want to do this." I don't know. And we don't know what's going to happen with the, with the different partners that we are talking about, with the borders of Coalition of Borders Participation, what they're going to say. We don't know what the NWCP are going to say. We don't know what's going to happen to the legal borders, what they're going to say when the lines are drawn. So there's a lot of moving parts that's going to be in that, going through that, once the lines are even drawn out, when we come to consensus of the lines. So it's a lot this year, it's a lot, because the community have changed a lot. It's a lot.
And Councilmember Parker?
Mr. Mitchell, since you've been through this so many times, may I ask, a district being added, I know that was something that was sort of discussed at our meeting, is that something you've ever seen before?
We looked at it and talked about that, but if a district is, if you add one district, you have to add two. So because you have all a district, because you have to have an odd one, so the mayor can be the odd person there, because the mayor is also a part of our council, so you're going to have to have 14, and you'd be the 15th person, you know? So that's the way it has to be done. So that's, and then it's going to take a lot to do that, because, you know, even with the financial part of it and everything else, you know? So that's something we have to think about, and that's something the mayor and the staff would have to talk about on that kind of, on that level.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Waring?
Our staff have been doing a great job on this, Tracy and her team have been doing a great job on this. If you remember, we as a council delayed that process until after the November elections, and then we ended up with a special election, and certainly we wanted to wait until after the special election. So Mr. Greg, we now know Mr. Greg can also participate in that process. So in a sense, we kind of participated in moving it forward, and those other, those other bodies didn't have to do that. Anyway, I just wanted to.
All right. We're working on it now. We have been working on it, but anyway. All right. So next is our council committee report. First up is traffic and transportation. Councilman Brady?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Committee on Traffic and Transportation met this afternoon virtually at 1:00 P. M. I'm going to take items A, B, and D and report on those, and then report on item C, since it's going to be, get to get first reading. So on the low-country rapid transit, you, we passed that at Ways and Means, but SEDOT will be taking over the design in coordination with the partners, and and I thank everyone for giving that approval at Ways and Means. The next was an intergovernmental agreement with Municipal Golf Course and Fleming Road with the county. That includes the Fleming Road sidewalk and the Municipal Golf Course crossing, which is someone who's prayed that my golf cart doesn't die when I'm crossing Maybank Highway between nine and 10. You know, that, it it's precarious, but that'll be a hawk signal, and so hopefully, that will bring some relief to the pedestrians. I think it'll be a great access for the neighborhood, being able to cross more safely as well, so there's kind of a win-win there. And the match is set at 71,000 for the Municipal Golf Course portion of that and 100,000 for the Fleming Road sidewalk design and construction. On item D, which was an MOU for Berkeley County, Seven Farms Road Pedestrian Crosswalk Improvement Project, that project is between Island Park Drive and River Landing Drive. The notice to proceed was issued on February 1st. There was a pre-construction meeting last week, and they are ready to proceed with installation. I thank you for passing that at Ways and Means. Item C, which I would ask, and I would so move, is the pedicab ordinance. As we know from discussion in the past, the current ordinance requires that a storage facility already be in place before the medallion is issued. That places an undue burden on some of the operators that are making a bid for those. So the amendment language will make securing the space for storage, if you get the award, it would be contingent on receiving that space and securing that. So we did have a discussion. It did get recommended out three to two, but I can let, if there's any discussion on this as we go forward, the other councilmembers can explain why they did not agree with it. And so I would move that we accept the pedicab ordinance amendment.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, what was the amendment with the pedicab? Did someone?
Pedicab, someone told me about it.
So the the history of this is, as you recall, we have a limited number of medallions on the street for a limited number of pedicabs, and there's less during the day than there are at night. This is something that's, over the course of 12 years, been born of when we didn't have any pedicabs at all. The first TNT meeting that I actually went to was the day that we authorized pedicabs on the street of Charleston, after the prior committee had banned them for life. So we've, we've come a long way, and the idea was to expand the number of pedicab medallions available under our current program from a total of 30 at the, at the peak hours, and I see my council look at me, make sure I say something right, and add six more for bidding. And we actually, under the current ordinance, put it out for bid and required that the bids come in and comply with the solicitation, which, one of which was that you had a place to store your pedicabs on the peninsula so that they were accessible. We knew where you were storing them, where they would be. A solicitation went out. There was a number of people who bid for, who bid on the ability to bid on the new six medallions. There was inspections made to see whether or not they had storage facilities in place before we actually put the bids out, and two of the people did not have storage facilities. So the bid was effectively thrown out. My vote against this was that we've set, the two failed bidders put on their applications that they had storage facilities, and they didn't. So I voted against this because I didn't think we should reward someone in that instance. Now, is it a huge deal? Is it the end of the earth and world that we allow someone who's competitively bidding to get in business, small business on the peninsula of Charleston, to fill in some of the blanks before they actually get on the street? It's not, and and we can certainly do that, but I don't see that the two-week gap that we allow between the time that the medallions are are awarded and ultimately issued really gives anybody that great an opportunity that they didn't already have to put the infrastructure in place. So that's was sort of where we were going forward. Did I sort of state all that correctly? Anyway, we need those six more medallions on the streets, I believe, and the demand is out there, so I don't want to get in the way of that happening. I think we should go through the solicitation properly, but when people put things on solicitation bids and they're not quite accurate, and we send our staff out there to inspect, and they find that out, that was a little bit of a problem for me. And with this amendment change in the ordinance, it will put another level on our staff because they have to go through the solicitation, weed through the applications to make sure you're compliant, and then after the medallions are awarded, then go out sometime, two weeks before they're actually physically given to someone, and find out again whether or not you're compliant with the ordinance, which will require you to have storage facilities on the peninsula for your pedicabs. So that's a long explanation of a no vote, and that was mine.
Okay. Well, I don't have big problems with the pedicab. My thing is that even when you do these, with the pedicabs coming forth, just tell them to obey the law. Obey the law in traffic time, because there's too many times, they came in front of me, I must run them over, and and I can get those shots sometime when he gets things like that, because I'm not here to hurt anyone. But just tell them to obey the laws, because they're not obeying the law. Like I said, I live on King Street, so I'm up and down King. Tell them to obey the law, and we need to put that, we need to put that in writing and tell them to obey the law. Things like the bicycles and stuff like this, too. You know, they'll come all on the right side, on the left side of you, the bicycles, and that causes problems, too, because you can hurt someone. And that causes problems too, because you can hurt someone like that. And the pedicabs, they'd be in the middle, and you pull out, they pull out on you, you know. This would be just like the cars on the street. Traffic wise, traffic movement. So tell them to obey the law. Because my head is kind of bad sometime, you know.
So. Amen.
Amen, that's another issue.
Yes, sir.
I, I would offer that it'll probably be a wash on the staff time. You know, we, we won't have to check beforehand whether they have facilities or not. So you just will assume they'll get them if they get a, you know, if they're the successful bidder. So you only have to check those who are successful and not everybody. So maybe we'll save time on that. I mean, the bottom line is it, it reduces the barrier for someone who wants to get into a business that, that shouldn't have a real high barrier. If some small guy or woman wants to aspire to start a small business, you know, they wouldn't have to rent a place not knowing whether they're gonna be awarded the contract or the medallion or not. So they only have to make that commitment when, when they know they have the opportunity to, to go into business. So anyway, the, the time factor ought to wash out. I hope it's not that big a deal. Councilmember Bowden.
And I, I ask this just because I genuinely have no ideas. Two weeks long enough to rent storage space on the peninsula? But I just.
He doesn't know, so he can, he can answer that himself.
Councilmember Parker.
Yes, and I'm not sure if, you know, I need to explain my no vote or not, but really it was just, it was just the burden, the additional burden on the staff and the, the two-week lag time. That was it, being very new to the pedicab industry. It was just explained to me that way, and I understood, so just detail, but that's why.
Understood. Councilmember Brady.
Yes, and I would just add clarification and like to call the question. But we've done, adding a contingent option such as this is not unusual. We've done that with garbage companies before. When a new company has come forward, we would make signing the contract contingent on getting equipment and getting it up and running. And so this is something that's been normal, that we've been able to do before with much larger capital outlays that the company is required for than just securing the storage space. So I just wanted to point that out. I'd like to call the question.
And, and so the motion on the floor is basically to approve item C. First reading, all right. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and back to Councilmember Brady.
And that concludes my report.
Mr. Mayor, before, before we go to public works, I do have a request of TNT if they could maybe bring some information. Not now, maybe in two weeks, or push it out to me on these golf carts and where they're allowed to be used on the peninsula. I've got, believe it or not, living West Ashley, I've got complaints from people on the peninsula, in particular in the corridor that, that council member Seekings spoke about meeting and hearing up in that corridor, people on golf carts as traffic's trying to get out of town to get to Mont Pleasant Ramp and the like, and, you know, golf carts. So I don't wanna talk about it now, but if we can, I don't know what the rules are on that, so maybe we can push that up.
We, we can request a report at TNT.
I was gonna say, we can definitely get that on a forthcoming agenda.
Yeah. I think you have the same issue as with the pedicabs, that some folks don't follow the rules.
And just so you know, we can distribute it, the CPD actually just recently put out a really good, just one-page sort of blast on what the rules are. So we'll get them out there and get.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right, next up is our Committee on Public Works, Councilmember Waring.
All right, good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You see on your agenda where we had A1 and A2, the low battery, I don't wanna speed through it, but it's magnanimous, the way that project was envisioned years ago. Budget, and it's less than a hundred thousand over from change orders. I, I've never seen that before, but that's happening in our city right now. And all involved needs to be commended on that. That was moved and approved unanimous. I'm gonna skip down to A3, Farberry Woods, Councilman Brady, that passed unanimous as well. The exec. Take a position, so I move adoption of the report.
All right, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is our Committee on Ways and Means, Councilmember Seekings. All right, any, any discussion, Councilmember Brady? Oh, I thought you. All right. All right. All right, we'll prove the report from Ways and Means with the exception of Cunningham Avenue.
As a point order, because there's a motion in a second on the floor, the motion would need to be amended to pull that out.
All right. Good, good point.
I said the motion be amended, so we can, I can speak directly at council on Cunningham Avenue, see.
All right.
Thank you.
Would the maker of the motion allow the amendment, or do we want to vote on the amendment separately?
There was a motion for adoption of the report. I did not.
Who made the motion?
Councilmember Mitchell made the motion. Yes, sir.
I'll accept it this time. Thank, thank him. I mean.
All right. Okay, for the accept the report with the exception of Cunningham Avenue would all indicate in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now we'll take up the one matter of approval of Cunningham Avenue contract. Councilmember Waring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those who are not part of the Real Estate Committee really did miss out on a robust conversation. This is a parcel of land that the city in December closed on an adjacent property that's ten times larger, one million four hundred and twenty-five thousand. The property at the time had four houses on it, dilapidated albeit. And that price was predicated on four houses plus that land. This building was, eleven Cunningham was sold June twenty-fifth, two, night, two thousand nineteen for six hundred and fifty thousand. In less than three years, we were contracted to buy that, well, if we were to sign this, we contracted to buy this building for one point three million, which would be a price of over a hun, valuation of over a hundred percent of value in less than a three-year period. These dollars that we have for affordable housing and for the frankly, people who need a second chance or need a leg up, are precious dollars. We would be paying almost four hundred dollars a square foot for property that we still have to renovate for the needs that we have. When I looked at the appraised value, the appraised value had four comparables in it. One was ILA Hall. Three of them were on either Meeting Street, fronted on either Meeting Street or Morrison Drive, which is certainly much more premium location than a location that's surrounded on three sides by graveyards. And I don't know if you rode up there and took a look at it, but I think you should go up and take a look at it if you didn't. My motion at City Council was to simply defer this, so we can try to negotiate a better price. I even further said, was to rush. And in my opinion, it was rushed through. I don't know that we have another site in the city of Charleston that's surrounded by, on three sides by graveyards that's priced at or sold at for one point three million. In all the experience of this appraisal, our comparable wasn't used, which shares a property line with this. They couldn't say the property, they couldn't say the comparable was old. We just closed on it on December two thousand twenty-one. One of the comparables used in that appraisal goes back to two thousand nineteen. So we actually bought the property next door, share property line, and the appraiser said, we're not gonna use that comparable. And just the mathematics of it, if we, if he were to use that comparable, it would lower the value of the building. So you go far away and get appraisals, get comparables elsewhere. You know, I didn't really, I learned this up at Carolina. There's an adage that says, liars figures and figures lie. And what that means is, I didn't understand it. But after I got out of Carolina, I did. You can make numbers tell the story you want. You literally can make the numbers tell the story you want, and the story you want is a one point three five million value. That's what's being done here. Now, in the committee meeting, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I pointed out that you have a conflict interest. You said you didn't. You cannot be the arbiter of whether you have a conflict of interest or not. You can't. And the reason we have these conflict of interest rules is because it can, if you have a conflict and you debate the issue, you can cloud and influence the issue. And there were, as I say, it was a robust decision on, discussion on. When I looked at the contract, the contract says, we're gonna buy this from COZ LLC. And with a quick check of the Secretary of State, the registered agent of COZ LLC is Mr. Robert Clement, of which your son is in partner. Now, you may not have known that. And I'm taking the high road and say you didn't know. But now that you know it, it is indeed a conflict, Mr. Mayor. And when we debate these issues on behalf of others, because we are trustees of the public money, it has to be an above-board conversation. Now, if we have family members in business with people who sell in property to the city, I can't participate in it. As a matter of fact, not only I can't participate in that discussion, I have to walk out the room while all of you are debating. And hopefully, as I prayed for, the best of your intellect, in particular, in particular for those who are less than, springs forth for the betterment of the city. I am asking, again, that we defer this purchase in an attempt to get a better price, because at this price, I think we are leaving on the tax rules. One point three million that's surrounded on three sides by graveyards, let's let them pay their property tax. And if somebody else wants that building, let's let them have it. We need to take the one point three million and put it, put it towards the primary objective, towards building a new structure that's designed for the purposes we need. As opposed to taking a building that was outfitted, frankly, for a real estate company. And at today's meeting, you, I'm sure you, along with I, have a nice colored drawing that was put on our desk. That's the first time I saw this, showing where the showers and the bathrooms and warming areas would be, which I'm in favor of. I'm in favor of taking the one point three million and building that new building on property we have already purchased. We can do better by those people, is what I'm saying. We can do better by the homeless out there that's trying to get a leg up. We do not need to overpay on properties, frankly, that's not designed for the express purposes. So for those reasons, I just don't see how it hurts the city to try and negotiate a better price. So through council, through city real estate committee meeting, it went through in a divided vote. I don't think a lot of information was provided to some of the members. You voted on it, Mr. Mayor, and I'm gonna ask respectfully, I can get our council to come, we can get the legal council to come to the microphone, but I think that's a clear conflict. Again, like I said, I didn't know it until a quick check of the Secretary of State showed that, who's the registrar of that LLC that we know. So trying to buy his property. I look forward to trying to talk to the principals of that corporation in an attempt to lower the price. And if they can't, then I think we can fly those dollars much, much better on behalf of those that, the people that we're trying to help. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I would respectfully ask council, now that this matter has come up in such detail, that we asked Mr. Gianna Johnson to come forward and make a presentation as she did at the Real Estate Committee. And I would like to, for council to be aware of, of the decision that was made at that meeting this afternoon. So I want you to have all the information.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for a point of order, though. I think the piece about the conflict of interest needs to be determined.
It will be, it most certainly will be. But all the facts about this matter need to be brought forward at this point.
If you have a conflict, the mayor pro tem.
You're out of order.
I am not out of order.
You are out of order.
I am not out of order.
I am calling Gianna Johnson to the stand.
If you have a conflict, Mr. Mayor.
I'm calling you out of order, Councilmember.
You are not out of order. I am not out of order. I'm asking for a point of order. If you have a conflict, let's root. And the mayor pro tem should preside, not you.
We'll be glad to address that point, Councilmember. I will be glad to do that.
That's what the point of order is for, for it to be addressed.
Okay.
If you have a conflict, the mayor pro tem would have to decide.
First of all, you brought up the issue. We separated out the item, correct?
I did, we did.
And so you're asking council to consider that matter separately, right here at City Council, correct?
Also requested the point of order on your council.
Okay.
Can I make a point? Here today. I think when it was separated out and the committee report coming out from Ways and Means, there's now been a motion to defer put on the floor that I think needs to be addressed before there's any presentation. That needs to be heard any further, and I see my legal counsel in stereo nodding yes. So I think that motion needs to get a second and then be voted on, and then we can go from there.
I'm sorry, what motion is that?
There was a motion put out by Councilmember Waring to defer this matter.
Right.
My microphone. You're turning me off on purpose. Sorry. Think that takes precedence, and that needs to be heard before we have any presentation. And I think it's.
Second.
And it's been second.
We have a motion on the floor to defer. Does the matter, to answer the question about my conflict of interest, take precedence over that? Could I ask council to opine on that question, please?
There's a current motion on the floor to defer. I think that motion takes precedence. The motion to defer should be heard first.
Okay, thank you. So respectfully, you've presented a lot of information, part of the information that I think our council members need to hear the other part of the information about this proposal before they even make a decision about deferral. So I would respectfully ask that they be given all the facts about this matter before voting on a matter to defer. And I would respectfully call on Ms. Johnson to come back up and make a presentation about this matter that came before real estate earlier this afternoon. Ms. Johnson.
Can I, can I speak to that? Get a, I mean, I, I think, Mr. Mayor, we're not voting on the substance of this in a matter to defer, so we can take it up later. Am I right about that? And I think that we need to vote on that.
I'm happy to do that, and if you would like for me just to explain my personal reasons why I don't believe we should defer, I'd be happy to do that. But honestly, it includes a lot of information that was presented earlier this afternoon. Councilmember Bowden.
Thank you. Since it seems to me that clearly there were a lot of things that I'm, I'm not privy to, but I need more information to decide whether this is worth deferring. So just as a, kind of a matter of courtesy, can we sort of take that away, get the more information? You know, if I'm, if I'm trying a case and I wanna point to somebody else as having done it, I need evidence of that, more than just a bare suspicion, which is kind of what I'm hearing right now. And so I, I sort of wish the legwork would have been done before this to flush this out a little bit. But I'd, I'd like to hear it all now, since it's all, since this has all been brought up.
I think that's well and good. I have one other question, because I don't think it got reported out. And that might be my failing as chairman of Ways and Means, when we took the real estate report from Councilmember Pell, I don't think it was reported what the vote out of real estate was on this matter to defer. So if we can. So if we can at least get that on the record and report to council what that vote was, because I don't think that was reported out. Am I right about that?
It, it may have been omitted, but to the best of my recollection, I think the motion to defer during the committee meeting was three to two, opposed to deferring. And then the vote subsequently to bring it out of committee was, I believe, four to one.
Okay.
Right. So the matter before you, to consider whether to defer or not, is to approve a contract to purchase a piece of property at 11 Cunningham Avenue. It's an office building. The building is almost as big as the parcel itself. I think the finished space is somewhat over 3,100 square feet of finished office space. The property was purchased, as councilmember Waring noted a few years ago, for 650,000, but there was substantial renovation to convert it into an office space. It was not primarily office space at the time the property was purchased, so a major renovation occurred. That's pertinent, because this building can be utilized for the purposes we need it for, for moving the navigation center to this location, and to be able to do it in a timely manner. We currently have enjoyed a wonderful lease of the property down at 529 Meeting Street, but our lease is month to month. And the owner would like to redevelop the property. He hadn't given us notice to leave yet, but we, we know his intentions are to redevelop the property. We've asked him over the years whether he would sell it to us, but he prefers to redevelop it. So we need an office component for what we do at 529, and that's what we could buy now. And basically, at a moment's notice, so to speak, if he were to move us out of the property, we'd have a place to relocate. We'd like to go ahead and do that. So, I mean, I, I get the point that you're questioning the value of the appraisal. I'm not an appraiser. I, I believe the gentleman who did the appraisal to be of high integrity, and that he gave us his honest opinion on the appraisal. In fact, Ms. Johnson confirmed that today, that he stands by his appraisal, that property's worth 1.3 million dollars. I pointed out earlier today that without the appraisal in hand, in fact, the property owners had requested that we give them more money than 1.3 million. And when we got the appraisal done, we, in fact, got them to agree to the appraised price. So some negotiation already occurred. Yes, the property is right next to the property that we own, which is, which is, I think, not just convenient, but very beneficial to the city, that we can accomplish what we want to with the, with the Hope Center. We now will call it the Hope Center rather than Navigation Center, and try to preserve as much of the property for affordable housing development as possible. Regarding the ownership of the property, councilmember Waring, you're right. It belongs to an LLC. And very often, as you know, when people, partners buy an LLC, buy a piece of property, they'll often put it in the name of a legal entity in LLC. Mr. Clement is one of the owners of that LLC. I understand, along with Mr. Coleman, Stuart Coleman, I know them both. I'm not related to either one of them. My son, Joseph, is a partner in the real estate firm CCNT. They are a tenant of the LLC. So when the property sells, my son gets no benefit or proceeds from the sale of the property, only the LLC will, which includes Mr. Clement and Mr. Coleman. So I mentioned that this, this afternoon, that the real impact on my son would be the inconvenience of having to move his office when they find other quarters somewhere else. But I am not related to the owners. My son is not a owner of the property. I get no economic interest from the sale of the property. My son gets no economic interest from the sale of the property. And regarding on making a decision about any vote that comes before us, my colleagues, you know, you know, if you have some interest in any matter that comes before the council. And so you've got to be first in line to make that decision. Gee, do I have an economic interest in this matter or not? So councilmember Waring, yes, it's absolutely up to all of us individuals to make those determinations. Now, if you don't agree with me, if you have knowledge otherwise, you're certainly free to make a complaint to the State Ethics Commission and say, well, gee, I have the floor right now. You can make a complaint. But it's certainly within my right, given the knowledge that's in my head about whether I've got a personal interest in any matter that comes before us or not, to make that decision. So, you know, this is a convenient property. It meets the appraisal. You know, we're talking a little bit of apples and oranges if you're comparing the value of a building versus the land value, like the property next door. We're buying this property, if approved by council and after our due diligence, for the office use and not for the, for the land. And in fact, as I mentioned, we want to save any, any real estate that we can, you know, for affordable housing in the future. I did look at the appraisal just now, councilmember, and there were four comps. I did not see the ILA Hall as being one of the four comps. I see 716 Meeting Street, 1149 Marston Drive, which is nearby, but is a two-story brick building, a property on North Hanover Street, and 1114 Marston Drive. So I would respectfully ask council to deny the deferral, and let's vote on this matter tonight, as was contemplated at length this afternoon at a committee meeting, and as noted, was decided after hearing all the observations and facts about the matter, that the committee approved the matter four to one. Would anybody else like to be heard? And then I'll come back to councilmember Waring. Councilmember Parker?
For you, but yes, I mean, my issue is just the conflict of interest, not even the, you know, if you're not, there's no incentive, financial incentive. It's just the conflict of interest. Why wouldn't it have been disclosed? Even if there's no economic, you know, you're not receiving anything, or your, your son isn't, just the... Councilmember Pell, I've noticed there have been situations where you have excused yourself, yourself from some situations. Is that because you didn't have an economic interest, or just it was, you knew somebody or didn't know them, so you... I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I just...
What I've been doing at the house, but there's a variety of reasons why I've refused myself over the years. Sometimes I have current clients, so I'm an attorney. Sorry, everybody. Sometimes I have clients that I represent, say in Mount Pleasant, that are doing business in the city of Charleston. I can't vote on, you know, a situation where they're trying to get a piece of property rezoned. Other times, I've had situations where I've had familial interests. So for example, when the Morrisocal properties came for us to be rezoned, I can't, I can't vote on that, even though I can promise you I am not seeing any dollars and cents from that. I wish I was. Sorry, Mom, if you're watching. But at any rate, there's a variety of different reasons. But I do think the mayor is, is right. I mean, I do think that, under my understanding of South Carolina's Ethics Act, it's, it's the responsibility of each of us to, you know, identify those situations when there is a conflict and be able to raise your hand and pull the cord. But at the same token, as the mayor pointed out, there are, you know, avenues for votes to take independent action if they believe that certain things are not being handled correctly. But, you know, it's, it's, I hope that answered your question.
It does. And sorry, and again, sorry to jump in front of you, but it's just, I, the, the, the conflict of interest, you know, I, clearly, there's some, something there that, you know, beyond, with, without Mr., you know, councilmember Waring bringing that to my attention, I would not have known that otherwise. So I, I think that is why I seconded your motion to defer, because I think there needs to be discussion.
All right. Any other comments, questions? I'd like to kick, councilmember Chee, no?
Yes, sir. So we did have a very robust discussion about this issue at our real estate committee meeting. I'm still wrestling with the sticker shock of this property. And as I mentioned, the real estate committee meeting, at the invitation of, suggestion of councilmember Waring, I drove out to this property. And this is an old, like, by the way, of saying, more of an industrial area of the northern part of the city's boundaries. There was a Volvo repair shop out there. I think the original building, you mentioned, Mayor, earlier, its use, I think, was a crematorium at one point. And I think that's why it was renovated to an office space. Right behind this building is the original Greek cemetery. So you cannot expand anything to the rear part of this building. It's on a corner. Our property, the city's property, will be on the left-hand side, and across the street are the other cemeteries out there in this general area. I'm having, honestly, a rough time getting my hands around a building of 3,000 square feet, a story and a half worth, in this location, 1.3 million dollars. I mean, this just, it doesn't make sense. I read the appraisal twice. I went over it twice. I looked at the comparables. I did, we did the math. Councilman Boyd went over it as well. It's $400 a square foot, if you break it down in that category. The money that we have for affordable housing is, is limited. It's precious. We are stewards of the public funds. I've talked to Gianna about this. She made her presentation for us. It would be extremely convenient for this property to be owned by the city to do the things that they need to do. They're getting kind of pushed out of the current location. I get all of that. I think perhaps a better part of valor on this is to defer it, this, this regroup on it a little bit, and take another look at it. I know that the contract that we would sign gives us a due diligence period, but perhaps maybe we should just look at this in a different prism than what we're looking at it right now. Let's defer it. Let's come back to it in a couple of weeks to see if we can make any other progress on it. If there's something with that appraisal that makes us uncomfortable, like I'm feeling uncomfortable with the, the value of it, quite frankly, that would give us an opportunity to, to do that. So I would support the motion to defer.
Councilmember Gregg, and then councilmember Sacran.
I just want to, point of information, make sure I'm understanding the contract, right? So we have 60 days after the execution of this document due diligence, and then 60 days after that for closing. But assuming that we approve this motion tonight, this sale would go through. This is not going to come back to council for approval again, correct? Am I...
Well, it wouldn't necessarily have to. Certainly during the due diligence, we might uncover information that we'd bring back to council and recommend not proceeding and let you all know.
But that ship has sailed once, once we execute the document.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Sacran?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think I would vote to support the deferral. I think part of that discussion we had earlier, that Gianna mentioned, was that the timing of this is, is we're in need of, of making a transition for, for current staff, current facilities. Why can't we, you know, agree to defer it and then order two additional appraisals, and then get back to this at the next council meeting, make sure those appraisals come in? As someone that lives in that, that area, I don't think these appraisals are, are, that initial appraisal is going to be out of whack. I know it's sticker shock, but the values of that area have gone up significantly the past, at least the past year. So with two additional appraisals, that'll give us something to compare, apples to apples. I'm, I would support the deferral, but I'd want to make sure we get that back on our next agenda with those two additional appraisals in hand.
Councilmember Sacran?
Thank you. Just a matter of procedure, to make sure we're all clear where we are and what the deferral is. Councilmember Waring made the motion to defer. It was, came out of Ways and Means committee report, from a real estate committee report. So if it gets deferred, what I would ask councilmember Waring is either clarify or accept that if it comes back, it comes back to a body of the whole being Ways and Means as opposed to real estate. So councilmember Bowden and others of us who are not on that committee can engage in this debate. And with all due respect, councilmember Sacran, I don't think unless councilmember Waring accepts an amendment to having two appraisals before it comes back to us, that that's going to happen. But we can make it happen in no short order, because we can get this back on Ways and Means, and councilmember Gregory will be back, so he can deal with it. We can get it back, we can get it back in two weeks. So I, I just, I'm right about the procedure on that, am I not? Okay. So I don't know, councilmember Waring, if you want to amend your motion to defer to...
Listen, to get, I'll amend it, councilmember, because I want to get more accurate information so we can make a good decision on behalf of, again, citizens that we're trying to help. So, yeah, I'm fine with it. But...
All right.
May I ask for just one appraisal instead of two? They are $2,700.
And we'll, we'll hear all, we'll hear all that anyways. They don't happen in two weeks normally.
They don't happen in two weeks. It'll usually be four to six weeks. Four weeks, they just appear.
Councilmember Waring?
Again, I'm getting back to the conflict. You eloquently explained your son's role, but you, you admitted that your son's partner, partners would profit from this. It is, he's not making a profit. You're not making a profit. But your son's partner's making a profit. You, you say he's a tenant in the building, but he's in partnership with at least Mr. Clement. I don't know about the other gentleman. So you don't think it's a conflict. I think we need a ruling on that. And you invited that if this is the key. I don't think we ought to do business in a gray area like that. We're going to have executive session tonight on a situation with the law school that had gray areas all over it, and we're in court on that right now. So I think we need, I'd like to get an opinion from our council. The mayor doesn't think he has a conflict. I think he has a conflict. It's a matter of opinion, but his son's partner will profit or benefit as a result of this contract if it goes through. That should be disclosed to all of council.
I don't believe that the, the conflict of interest laws and state ethics laws are, if I recall correctly, presuppose that a conflict arises when the person who is voting or participating in the vote is him or herself to receive some sort of benefit from the outcome. And then there's a list under the state ethics laws of other people besides that person, him or herself, who may be receiving a benefit as a result of the vote, some other father, sister, a whole host of other folks that will have a benefit conferred upon them if the vote to do the transaction goes through. As I understand it, in this case, what we have is the mayor's son being in partnership with someone who is an owner of an LLC, but the partnership itself will not have a benefit conferred upon it by virtue of the vote, but the LLC will have a benefit conferred upon it. Under what I believe would be a, a fairly reasonable reading of the state ethics laws, it does not seem to me that that would be necessarily, or that would be a conflict of interest. If, in fact, the mayor's son is simply in partnership with someone who him or herself would be receiving a benefit as a result of whatever the council is voting on.
Thank you, sir.
I'll write the commission.
Now, yeah, that, that is an option. There is an option to, you know, to ask for an opinion from the ethics officer or someone at the State Ethics, Ethics Commission as to whether or not that would be declared a conflict, those circumstances.
Mr. Johnson, I call for the question.
On the motion to defer.
Councilmember Bowden?
Councilmember Bowden.
I just want to, the motion is gone through a couple iterations because that defer. Is it, is it for the, is it for the purpose of an appraisal or is it for this like airing of grievances that we're doing about?
It was a purpose initially in, in, uh, real estate and now here to negotiate a better price. Price is too high. That's what it was. Uh, we wasn't even, we don't even want to attempt to, uh, negotiate a better price. So that's why I asked for the referral, counsel.
All right. All in favor of the referral, please say aye. Any opposed? Nay. All right, the ayes have it.
That concludes the report of the Ways and Means Committee.
Great.
I would move to take one, three, five together for bills up for second reading.
All right. We've got second reading of L. one through five. Any, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Now we have third reading and ratifications of items one through five. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. And next we have bills up for first reading that are deferred. And, um, then, um, under our executive session, uh, in fact, we are deferring the, the discussion about the Charleston School of Law this evening. We're not talking about that. Um, apparently our outside attorney decided, um, it didn't have enough information to report at this time, or maybe one of the attorneys wasn't even available. So, uh, we'll come back to you on that one. And we have, uh, um, item to go into executive session to discuss the Johnstown Municipal Improvement District. All right. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll meet across the hall in my.
You wanna put us... you wanna put...
Move to adjourn.